All right, I think we'll go ahead and get started. And if you'll hurry and come in and find a seat, we would appreciate that. Welcome to everyone who is here. It's great to see so many people. So, we're happy that you are here this evening. And we will go ahead and begin with our roll call. We have Dell Hansen, Business Manager; Terry Rhodes, Board Member; Jeff Nelson, Board Member; Alan Groening, Board Member; I'm Kathy Christensen, Board Member; Roger Pulsifer, Board Member; Steve Norton, Superintendent; Randall Bagley, Board Member; and Larry Jepson, Board Member. And we're going to start with the pledge and the recitation of our mission statement by Roger Pulsifer.
Our mission is to educate students for success in a changing world.
Okay, thank you. We're going to begin with a little bit of fun tonight. We are going to have the Canyon Elementary Choir presentation. And the principal of Canyon Elementary is Stacy Williamson. And the choir is going to be directed by their music teacher, Barbara Shidler?
Shidler.
Shidler, thank you. So, we'll have you come in.
As a link, I want to make one comment. This is not just T. Barbara Shidler, she is T. Barbara Shidler. She is amazing. And our choir actually has all sorts of students in it. It is huge. We have a junior and senior choir. And so, these are the cute students that were able to come tonight and perform for you. But she really is the reason we have a choir. If it wasn't for Barbara, there would be no choir. And we each have our school programming. We did a Disney, we are a leader in music school at Canyon Elementary. And we did a Disney made to eight habits program for a spring show. And it was really, really cool. And this is our Color of the Wind, which is also a habit for Tom. Wouldn't it?
And we did a Disney made to eight habits program for a spring show. And it was really, really cool. And this is our Color of the Wind, which is also a habit for Tom. Wouldn't it?
Thumbs up to all of you students. That was awesome. Wow, we wish you would come every single month and sing for us before each meeting. It sets such a wonderful tone, doesn't it? And could we have the parents of all of these students who have supported this stand? And let's acknowledge you too. Thank you. We will go ahead and begin with our recognitions. And first of all, we have our guest French teacher, Aurelia Naou?
No.
Nope?
No.
Okay. From Providence Elementary. So today, Trudy Wilson and I would like to honor Aurelia Naou. Let's give her a hand. Let's try. Aurelia has worked this year as an international guest teacher, as a third grade teacher in our French dual immersion program. She left her home and her job in France to come and teach here. A significant sacrifice that has greatly enriched the lives of her students, has tremendously benefited our school district. Aurelia, we're going to miss your quick wit, your beautiful smile, your laugh, and certainly your dedicated service. So, we wish to thank you for all you've done this year, and we wish you all the best in your future endeavors.
Thank you. (Applause)
Straight, and straight ahead, too. We're having one from the district.
Lovely. Let me give a hand.
We need one from the district also, so if you'll just face straight forward. Thank you. We appreciate your service this year. Okay. Now, we will go ahead and move to the classified employees of the year. And we would like to get a picture of each of you as after your award is presented. So, if you'll just hang tight together for a minute while we get that taken after the presentation. And we will go ahead and start, first of all, with our custodial category. And our employee is Dave Gentry. And presenter will be Principal Pickett.
Yeah, so this is not Principal Pickett.
This is Cindy Allen.
Okay, Cindy Allen is going to be the presenter.
So, this is Dave's beautiful bouquet of jerky because he is a hiker. So, there's a little trail mix for him. Dave is the most amazing custodian. He works a night job and works with seventh and eighth graders all day long, if you can imagine. And he always has a smile on his face, always energetic, always positive. I've never heard him say a bad thing about anyone ever. And even just a few weeks ago, a student threw up in my classroom. I teach math, and so it was the front row where the throw up was. And we called Dave, and he came in, and we all kind of grossed out while he cleaned it up. And we all said, "Thank you, Dave," when he was done. And his response was, "Oh, thank you for the free math lesson." So, thank you, Dave.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much.
Oh, okay.
Hey, thanks.
All right. And Dave, do you have family here? Dave? Family here, Dave? Would you have them stand so we can recognize them?
Some of them.
Introduce us.
I'm pretty sure they're my relatives. (Applause) And my son, daughter.
Thank you. We appreciate it so much. Okay. From Food Services, we will recognize Annie Parker. And Scott Rigby is going to do that recognition. And we'll take care of that next.
Okay. If I could get Annie to come on up here, please. She's Annie, but she, her actual given name is Angelie Parker, which is short for angel, I believe. How are you? Great to see you, Annie. Just a couple of things I asked Diana, her supervisor, if she would just write a few words about Annie. And so, I'd like to read those to you now. One of the things that I always hear about Annie is that whenever you come to the kitchen and you're a student, "Learn something, have a great day." She is just so, so great with the kids. The kids are drawn to Annie. This is from, this is from her peers. "We have seen kids' days change because of the natural disposition. She has to be a friend to all, and especially the ability she has to recognize when someone is in need. Annie changes sad faces to smiles. She changes tears of sadness to tears of joy. And she softens attitudes by simply saying how great someone is. Annie notices when something is wrong, and she will tell you that she can see it and tell you that she loves you. Annie knows our families and is concerned about them and excited about the events that they go on outside of work. And as a worker, she is truly amazing. She compliments us and tells us how amazing we are in what we do. She is literally a self-esteem boost to us all. We all agree." And I would have to add that, that she is the type of employee that exemplifies everything that we were looking for in the child nutrition program. Someone who loves the children. Thank you, Annie, for all of your service. It is well deserved. (Applause)
All right. If we could get the picture, please. And... Annie, would you introduce your family to us if you have family here?
Yes. This is my sweetheart, Clark Parker, and our son, Job, and his wife, Brooke, and our twin girls, Ally and Avery Parker. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
All right. Next is our paraprofessional, Kristen Kimball, and Trudy Wilson will be presenting this award.
We are so honored to recognize Kristen Kimball as our Paraprofessional of the Year. We have such an amazing team at Providence Elementary. She does a fabulous job. I've asked Lauren Sharp to do the honors.
I am so excited to be here, to be able to be a part of this award. With 55 kindergarten students this year between my morning and afternoon class, Kristen has been an angel. And I want to share a few things that other coworkers and staff wrote about her. One said, "She has struggled for many years with the tragic loss of her daughter and many health problems, which include rheumatoid arthritis. Even though she is in pain most of the time, she is very dependable and always cheerful and positive. Kristen is one of the most compassionate people I know. People are her heart. Kristen delights in the children. She laughs with them, talks with them sincerely, and comforts them. I have observed distressed children come up to Kristen and then leave feeling understood and loved because of how she handled the situation." Kristen exemplifies what it means to be a loving and compassionate and caring teacher. And she represents our district well as she interacts with students and parents and other faculty members. Often, when students walk into the classroom, they really don't care to see me anymore. They say, "Where's Mrs. Kimball?" So, she deserves this award completely, and we just love her.
Do you have family? Would you introduce them, please?
My husband, Brad. Oh, I have to talk in this. My husband, Brad, and my boys Tanner and Hunter, and my parents, Terry and Terry Jones. And all of these cute ladies over here are my, yes, stand up. They're my family, too, at school. All the sweet aides I work with and teachers I work with. I couldn't have a better job. I love Providence and love what I do. Thank you.
Next is Ann Hunt, who will be recognized in the secretarial category. And Mike Littie will present this.
We'll see if we can calm this mic down. You stand in between, so you can't get away. No, it's really a pleasure for me to be here tonight to recognize my secretary, Ann. And I know she's very uncomfortable in these kind of situations, but I do, I need to do my best to make her squirm just a little bit. And if you watch closely, she'll turn red when that squirming begins, okay? I know her, okay? So, watch for that. But I know how, how much of a positive influence a secretary can make in a school or in any office setting, and how critical that person is, how it sets that environment. And more importantly, I know that any principal or director in our school district, if you start messing with their secretary, that sacred ground, you don't do that. So, we're very protective of our secretaries because they do so much for us. Now, I tried to make a list last couple of days when I've been out walking around. Okay, what does a secretary really do? Because everybody wants to be called different names besides secretary. So, I made a list here. First one, administrative assistant, okay, we know what that is. There are accountants, there are caterers, and some of you nod your head when you see that happening. Counselors, all the time. You've heard the statement before, when E.F. Hutton speaks, people listen. Well, when Ann talks, I've learned to listen, okay? And sometimes, she's had to get my attention, but I've learned to listen when she wants to talk about something. There are therapists, there are journalists, there are managers, there are confidants at times, there are psychologists, there are critics, which is important, but they're loyal, they're trustworthy, they're dependable, and they're also honest. And all those traits Ann has. When I asked the principals out in the schools to write letters of recommendations, I just had an onslaught of letters. I'm just going to read four quick comments. It really points the picture because we're all about customer service. We're about providing the schools what they need, and Ann does a great job with that. The first one, Ann is a professional in all that she does. One of her many great qualities is the way that she treats people either in person, either in a personal conversation or a phone conversation. She is always willing to find an answer, pass along a message or concern, a positive and/or provide a resource to help. No one has a bad experience talking with Ann on the phone. That's really important to us. Another note, I've had the opportunity to work with Ann for many years as a principal and have really appreciated her professionalism and yet personal way in which she works with each one of us. She has guided us through changes in school trust lands, school improving plans, career and technical education, and all the budgets that are involved with that. School budgets are always current and available to each principal because of her efforts. The next one, Ann has a wonderful sense of humor, lightens the load for each one of us, and she's also willing to accept compliments and appreciates what we even do for her. Another one, it's nice to know that if I ever have a question, I can always call Ann, and she will help me figure it out. When it comes to patience, kindness, and caring, there are not many people in our district that measure up to Ann. That's quite a compliment on that one. The last one, Ann has proven to be the hardest of workers and a great addition to help oversee all of our concurrent enrollment programs, trust lands, and CTE programs. I've been so impressed the last two years of how she's kept up to date on the balancing of these budgets. Whether talking to her in person or on the phone or through email, the results are always the same. She's calm, patient, and she always makes you feel important. So, just, I could go on and on, but I'm not. To conclude this, Ann is a great secretary. There's no question about it. And I've had many secretaries in my career, and she's among the best. She's a great secretary, counselor, accountant, and critic. But in addition to all this, she's a good friend of mine. So, it's my pleasure to present Ann as the Classified Secretary of the Year for Cass School District.
Ann, do you have family here?
Well, I have my work sisters.
All right. Yes.
Her buddies want to give her a little token as well.
We're going to move on to the recognition of the Teachers of the Year. And we'll go ahead and start with River Heights. And we will be recognizing Cheryl Orm. And Principal Harris will be the presenter.
Kind of go right to the middle there. Go on one side.
It's a pleasure to introduce you to Cheryl Orm this evening. And it was actually just a few years ago that we were in the same position, that our school community had chosen her to represent us a few years ago as our Teacher of the Year. And just a few years before that, she won a Hats Off Award from the Cass Education Foundation. So, she's received many honors, but she's well deserving of everything that she's received. She's the type of teacher that we can ask anything of her, and she just does a wonderful job. We've asked her to teach kindergarten before. She's been teaching third grade, and next year, she'll be teaching sixth grade. So, she's kind of run the gamut there through the school. And she helps us with our student leadership team that we call Team SOAR, is on our school's steering committee and our writing committee. She's one of those teachers who has the natural ability of teaching and handling children. Her students love and respect her. They listen to her every word. Mrs. Orm makes learning engaging and fun for them. She treats them in a kind and a calm manner. They feel safe with her, and they try their very best to please her. Her students know that she has high expectations to them, for them, and they respond to that. I'd just like to share a thought from one of her colleagues. And they said that Cheryl is always raising her own bar. She's always improving her strategies, her engagement, her mindset, and lessons to help her students succeed. She's constantly surrounded by peers for advice. Our school would not be the same without Cheryl. And I can give that a hearty amen. And Cheryl, thanks for everything you do every day for our students at River Heights Elementary.
Would you move in for a picture? Please?
I can't hold everything. I have my, I'm going to use this.
Okay, go ahead.
I have my husband here, and my daughter and her husband, and I have my school family here.
Would they please stand?
So, stand, all of you.
Okay. Since I'm going to help with the next two, I'm just going to announce these two together. From Sunrise, we'd like to recognize Sonia Butters. And Principal Toolson will be doing the presentation. And then, from Summit School, we'd like to recognize Diana Adams. And Principal Pugmire will be the presenter for that one.
I am so happy to recognize Sonia tonight. It's a great honor for me to be able to recognize her because she is one of those fabulous first-grade teachers. She's the kind of teacher who welcomes those kids as they come into the school, the very beginning of the school, and helps them to learn to love to be at school and to really want to learn and progress and do well. She's one of those teachers who, when we decided to become a dual immersion school, she said, "Yeah, I'll take that on." And she redid her whole schedule at least 20 times. Okay, maybe 2,000 times, I don't know, because we kept saying, "Okay, we need to adjust this, and we need to adjust that." And she just kept working with that to make sure that each one of her students was in the reading group that they should be in and to help make sure that they were getting the time that they needed to be able to learn that reading and to move forward and do that. So, she has been fabulous in doing those kinds of things. She is there early in the morning, and she's there late at night, and she just really works hard. And when I walk in her room, there's not a down moment. Those kids are working every single minute of the day, and she does a great job with that. One of her colleagues said that sometimes she'll have parents that come in at the beginning of the year, and they'll say, "My student really should be in this other book. It's a lot higher book, and she really should be reading out of this book." And Mrs. Butters very patiently explains to her, "Well, our testing shows that she should be in this book." And the parent says, "But my child should be in this higher book and reading out of this higher book." Well, Mrs. Butters very patiently explains to her again that, "No, this is where your child is tested, and this is where she really needs to be." And then, Mrs. Butters will say something to the effect of, "Will you just give me 'Till Christmas, and let's see how it goes if we get her going in the right place and give me 'Till Christmas.'" And lo and behold, by the end of the year, the parents are so thrilled because their child is even more brilliant than what they thought they were to begin with because of the work that Mrs. Butters has done. She's very well organized. She is, I'm looking through my notes to make sure I hit everything. She's also a team player. She's one of the leaders at our school, and she does a great job leading first grade and leading in all areas that she does at our school, and we're so fabulous for that. She has, I've calculated a little bit today, she has changed the life of over 500 students because she has taught them how to read and helped them be successful in school. And we're just, I'm so happy to present her.
Well, my husband is here. Stand up, Brett. And my son, Jason. Stand up, Jace. I claim you. And my two beautiful granddaughters. He also has a third one, but the two are here. And that's the ones that could make it tonight, so. Take that, have a picture.
So, I'm supposed to summarize all the amazing things that Diana does in two minutes. And you see how hard it is. Everyone else has not been holding the two minutes. It's pretty tough. So, I'm going to try. All right. Diana sees her students not only for who they are, but also for who they are. Diana sees her students not only for who they are, but also for who they can become. With this vision, she provides structure within a positive learning environment and effectively uses sound instruction to individually help her students achieve their very best. And for the second year in a row, Diana was able to get her students 100% of them on grade level. That is, I wish I could say I had done that. And she hasn't done it alone. One of the aides is here, and there's a lot of people, and obviously, we know that it comes from kindergarten, first grade up, but she does a very effective job. Former students come and visit her often. My son is one of those. If I can't find him, I just go down to her classroom. Also, I have a couple quotes. One came from a teacher, and I have several of them, but I'll keep it to one. "She has a strong desire and passion to help every student do his or her very best." And a parent said, "Mrs. Adams saw my child as an individual and worked with his strengths to help him be a successful student." Another one of her talents, I actually, two I'll state, is one, she honestly has a gift to know what students need. That's why she is so successful. She just has a gift. She meets with her kids and she knows what she needs to do to get them there, and she does everything in her power to get them there. So, and she has a great love for the kids. And so I'm just grateful that not only did she teach my child, but that we have so many kids that get to come through her classroom. So I'm happy to present Diana Adams as Summit's Teacher of the Year.
I have my wonderful husband here, and of course, I have my Sunrise family here. Cherie at the back, you stand up, and Kaylee, and my lovely aide, Mrs. West, and of course, Mr. Pugmeyer's wife. You're a part of this too, because like Troy said, I had your son, and I loved him just as much as all my other kids. So I appreciate all your support. Thank you.
Our next Teacher of the Year from Greenville Elementary, Janice Stettler, and she'll When you move around classrooms as a principal, one of the things that you notice is that classrooms most of the time represent very well the teacher's personality. And if that's probably more true in Janice's class than anywhere, because Janice is calm and collected, and when you go into her classroom, they are calm and collected. Sometimes you want to walk in and say, "Really? Are these second graders?" Because it's not a typical second grade classroom. And despite what happens in other places, Janice is always calm. Last year, she kind of had a tough year with some issues with her sister and some health items, and yet you would have never known that there were any issues going on because she still doesn't have any demands of anybody. She just does a wonderful job. She is fortunate also to get to teach at Greenville with one of the strongest teams that you could be part of. And I asked that team if they would write something about Janice that they thought was appropriate, and I think it represents her extremely well. That team that she teaches with, those five of them that she's taught with for a number of years, probably have 100 years of experience in Cache County together. So when they talk, you probably should listen. Scores of children all the way from River Heights to Smithfield have been fortunate to have taught, to have been taught by Janice Stettler. Janice has an amazing career teaching several grades in Cache County School District. Each year, she has taken a group of children, taught them self-control, cooperation, calmness, and sent them with a great thirst for knowledge. Janice has used her outstanding organizational skills to create a perfect learning environment. Her classroom is always full of confident, happy, hard-working children. Her students know that she is their advocate, and they do know that she is always counting on them to do their best. Her positive comments and warm ways with each student brings out their true potential. Janice is the ultimate willing, diligent team player. She is quick to accept tasks and is always thorough and precise. Janice epitomizes the image of the inspirational, loving, dedicated teacher. She is enormously respected and loved by her children, parents, and fellow staff members. And that is well-written because it is all true. And Greenville is unbelievably pleased to present Janice Stettler as our Teacher of the Year.
Thank you very much. I have my son and his wife and two grandchildren and my school team here. Stand up, please. We would now like to recognize Kyle Ashcroft from Lewiston Elementary School, and Principal Burt will be making the presentation.
Kyle's really hating this, I know. After 39 years of teaching, all at Lewiston and all in fourth grade, this is really long overdue for him. He's kind of a mix of firm, but kind and really funny. I don't think anyone who's been to Lewiston at Halloween will forget Herman. I was warned about Herman before I got there, and he showed up at Halloween in unique and various locations. And the use of a two-way radio actually allowed him to have conversations with students who, to this day, think Herman is amazing. So you've got to pay attention when Kyle's around. He's kind of been the constant through a lot of recent changes at Lewiston, and we've referred to him this year as the last man standing. And he will actually be retiring after this year, and so that's definitely a legacy going. He's a teacher leader for sure. He's always willing to offer advice and assistance, and all of his colleagues and all of their, he overwhelmingly was selected as the Teacher of the Year, and all the colleagues said he's helped with everything from flat tires to copying papers to giving tests to helping out with student discipline to just a little bit of anything and everything. And most of what he does happens behind the scenes. He doesn't like to be in the spotlight, but when you get to school events, you see him surrounded by students, by parents, and by parents who were former students, and they all want to seek him out. And one step into his classroom, and you can tell that he loves science and he loves history, especially Utah history and all of that. He's organized multiple, multiple amazing field trips for these fourth grade students to go on, and they long remember those. I don't know why it is that students remember the field trips much more than the happenings in the classroom, but it sticks with them for sure. Lewiston Elementary is just proud and pleased to recognize Kyle, and like I said, it's probably long overdue as the Teacher of the Year.
presentation will be made by Principal Haley.
Okay, when I first met Belinda last year, I immediately gravitated to her because of We both love to cheer against BYU.
Sorry.
So we instantly became friends. Thank you very much.
No, I'm not done.
Okay, so, yeah, you're welcome. All right, so one of the things, well, there's many, many things, but Belinda loves to learn. She is the example in the whole building. She beams, she smiles, and I can approach her with anything and she'll go, "Okay." And then she will do it. And then she will also, she just has this energy about her that other teachers will go, "Well, I can do this too then," because of how positive she is. So let me just list, I had to make a list of all the things because they are amazing. First of all, after-school club. Rod Bullock at my school said, "Shelley, she's amazing. Just watch her. It's magical." And I peek in that room, and she's got groups of kids doing their homework, kids that we have a hard time during the day getting to do anything, and she can have them sitting side-by-side with her, working. So after-school club is huge. Thank you very much. And then, and she survived Rod, if anybody knows Rod. And then she serves on our SAT team. She is a crucial member of this team that gets together, and we actually meet weekly, to discuss children, at-risk children, and how we can support teachers. Well, she's the kindergarten teacher, so she knows the family. She knows all of the kids in the school. So she was able to give us ample information and great suggestions on how to help each of these children that came to us. Time Together Program. She recognizes the importance of helping those children in the home before they actually get to kindergarten. So she devotes her time and energy to inviting parents into our school for workshops where they get taught by her strategies that they can use in the home to get their children prepared for kindergarten. Huge asset to our school, so thank you. Home visits. She, before kindergarten starts, she visits every family, this is so amazing, every family and every child before they take a step into her classroom. So she gets to know them that way. This year, for our Friday meetings, which were abruptly taken away from us, our professional developments, she came up with, she came up with a form, sorry, I didn't mean anything bad about that, but we really miss, we really miss those Fridays.
Nope, taken.
Just at the same, almost, three strikes and I'm out. Okay, I'm still up to bat. So she developed this form whereby teachers could come up with something they're dealing with in their classroom, come up with strategies, and then be supported with those strategies and let me know, "What else can I do for you to help you through, overcome those obstacles in the classroom?" And it has an acronym, so we call it the GROW form. So thank you very much for getting that going, and then next year, we'll be able to really focus on that on our Fridays. She shares, but humbly doesn't say that it was her. She'll just always give credit to everyone else. She's helping other teachers. She's like a symphony in her classroom. If you could go into this classroom, she actually has a wand. So she will be teaching, and she will just, she's got this little wand that makes this little sound, and the children just do what they're supposed to, and they're little kindergartners, and they're all independently going from station to station and task to task, and they know where everything is and they know what to do. Oh, it's amazing. Then she incorporates innovative strategies. So she'll say, "Shelley, watch this. I'm going to try this," and blah, 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 blah. She is amazing in the classroom, and the kids love Park Elementary because of her. And she loves Park Elementary, and I know her heart is torn having to leave that building this year and go to White Pine. So I have one more thing to share. This is from a parent. The parent says, "She's amazing. She has been amazing all year and last year with my daughter, making sure she has all the help she needs and is ready for first grade." Have you heard this before? Okay. "She has gone above and beyond to help. I recently had a spinal surgery that recovery, and recovery isn't going as planned. And she went out of her way to help me and my family, especially my daughter. She is still in need of help and structure, and Belinda set up the school to have my daughter come to her morning class like normal, then go to lunch," this is a kindergartner, "and then have special help from Mr. Bullock and Mrs. Thurgood, and then go to Mrs. Dutton's afternoon kindergarten class. Then Belinda keeps my daughter for the after-school program and helps her do her homework. She makes sure my daughter is eating her lunch and is safe. It's been such a blessing to have that extra help for my recovery. And also, that extra help and preparation my daughter is receiving is amazing, and I couldn't be more grateful to Belinda for going out of her way every day to help me. She is the most amazing teacher. She definitely deserves to be Park's Teacher of the Year."
I just wanted to recognize my family, who I have a brand-new newborn baby that's here, and so I really appreciate it. So my children, will you stand up, please? And my husband, and my grandchildren. And then back in the back is Cheryl Dutton. This award should be as much Cheryl's as mine. She's helped me along the way.
See, she gets credit to everybody else.
Thank you. Okay, now, have we missed anyone? Spring Creek? Okay. We weren't sure about that. So from Spring Creek, we would like to recognize Meg Erickson, and who is? Oh, I'm getting a whole bunch of different messages here. Ammoni is recognizing her. Okay, thanks. Hope we got that straight.
She has to make a long walk from her art cave also, so she's used to this. Meg is best known by her students for her cheery smile and also for her crazy earrings. And you can see she's wearing a pair tonight as well. She has a whole bunch of different kinds, so the students are always excited to see what pair she's going to wear the next day. She also is, her infamous Tarzan yell on her students' birthdays that she provides them. They're excited when they have their birthday, so she gets to do that for them. What her students love about Meg is the fact that she not only teaches from the core, but she also tries to incorporate creative, unique opportunities for the kids to display their own interests and things that they get excited about. So they love art, they love ceramics, and they have such a good experience while they're there. One of the things that we really appreciate in Meg is, in these non-core classes, is she really strives to teach reading and writing. And this year, we have a big, exciting feat that in her department, we call Core Plus, they came up with a Common Formative Assessment that we are really excited about, that they have been using with their students so they can collaborate, when we collaborate on Thursdays and talk about, to help students learning and help them to grow. A highlight of Meg's class, which will be occurring next Tuesday night, I believe, is what we call Night at the Museum, where her students are able to display their art. They bring their parents, they come around, they take them on a tour, and they explain the process as they go around, and they kind of, they're the tour guides, and they get to take them through and show them each other's projects, their classmates, and then also their own, and they really, really enjoy that. This will be the third one of the year, so we're excited about that. Also, Meg has been teaching for 20 years, and she taught for 16 as an uncertified teacher in the district, and then was encouraged by an administrator, her administrator, to go back and get her certificate. So she did, and she was fortunate enough, as she was in her classes, to have some of her former students in there with her. So that was kind of exciting to be working alongside them again and helping them with their art, and she really enjoyed that. And in turn, they helped with your math and technology classes. So that was, technology was a biggie. So they helped her, so that was a fun experience for her. Meg also sits on several committees. She sits on the Daniel Robert Lynch Art Program, which is part of the Cache Education Foundation. She also sits on the Young Writers and Artists Fest. She also helps to promote the Cache County School District Celebration of the Arts. So she has such a love and a passion for art that she wants to help others, and it's an opportunity for her, show her students work too. Any chance she can get, she's always willing to do that, so we appreciate that about her as well. Also, one of the last things I wanted to say, she is, when she's not in her classroom, experimenting or working alongside her students, she is creating ideas, and she is a published illustrator, she does commission work, and she shows her arts in galleries. But she claims that her greatest work of art yet is her three children and eight great-grandchildren. Or great-grandchildren.
Do you want to have anybody stand?
Yes. My husband, my handsome, handsome husband's here, who supports me in all of my crazy ideas, so I'm really grateful for that. And my, my family at Spring Creek is here mourning with me because my kids all moved out of the valley and the state this year. So, all of my friends from Spring Creek, and, you know, all of you that know me that didn't come for me, but you're here anyway, so you should stand up.
Okay, we have one last teacher we'd like to recognize from Mountain Crest, Cade Bassett, and he will be recognized by Principal Hinky. A stand-in.
Actually, I wasn't really planning on doing this, but this is good. I'm actually very happy to do this. You know, it's interesting, two days ago, I've been interviewing for a French teacher. Cade teaches French at Mountain Crest, which, by the way, I'm proud to say I hired him at Mountain Crest. And, and he does an excellent job. The kids love him. I've been in his classroom a number of times, and he just does an outstanding job. And a couple of days ago, I was interviewing somebody for a French teaching position at Ridgeline High School, and it was his former mission companion or something. I better not say who it was, because he teaches another school in the area. But he spoke very highly of Cade as well. I had no idea that they knew each other or anything, and he talked about how they were good friends and could collaborate in teaching French, and he would be able to learn a lot of things from Cade, which I do believe. Cade's an outstanding teacher, and is well-deserving of this, so I'm really glad you're getting this, and I'm glad I could present it. So congratulations.
So I have my three lovely children here who will keep me at Mountain Crest for a long time. Go ahead and stand up, guys. This is Mahela Weston and Alana. And just want to say, I am delighted that Bob got to do this, because I'll be forever grateful that he brought me to Mountain Crest. Cass County District is a wonderful place to work. Yep.
Cade, can you get in the center? Cade, will you get in the center? Okay. I'm very linear. Thank you to all of our teachers. We love our teachers here in Cass County School District and appreciate them and their families so much. When you teach, it is a family project. Everybody is involved. Probably every family member at one time or another has had to put together a poster for their teacher to get to school for the next day to present, and so we thank you all very much for coming. All right, we're gonna go ahead and move along to the new car. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move along and have the presentation for the New Core Grant recipients coming in. Okay, so there's gonna be a little bit of a transition here while the others get in. Hey, we want to welcome our second round of guests here at board meeting tonight, and we're excited to hear about the New Core Grants and those who are going to receive them. These will be presented by Baltazar Rizzo and Quinn Bayme. Are they here? We're still working on it.
Mike, do you want to see if they're outside?
Mike, do you want to see if the presenters are...
Presenters are out there.
There they are.
They're coming? Okay. All right, we're ready for New Core presenters. Come on up. You have been introduced, but let me introduce you again. This is Baltazar Rizzo and Quinn Bayme. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And I'm Quinn.
All right, thanks for being here. Do you want pictures of these folks too? Okay.
Can you hear me? Right, my name is Baltazar Rizzo. I'll just introduce myself a little bit, so you get to know me, I guess, a little bit. I've been here in Cass Valley for about 23 years. All my kids have gone to school, probably you have taught some of my kids, I'm pretty sure of that. Can you hear me? I just, yeah? Okay. All right, so I work at New Core Steel. I've been there for 23 years, and I love it. I love that company. I mean, they're very, very good, and we do a lot of good things for the county, really. But anyways, so part of New Core's mission statement is to positively contribute to the communities we're part of. One way New Core has decided to do this is through donations to the school districts our children and neighbors attend. This year, the contribution of $50,066 would be divided between Buck Elder, Oneida, Cass County, Logan City, Preston, and Westside School District. New Core is proud to be able to donate $16,712 to Cass County School District. This year, 48 projects were selected from 78 projects that were submitted by school teachers. At this time, I, representing New Core, would like to thank all the teachers for your hard work, dedication, and love to our children. You are an extension of our family education that can change lives, making them better citizens, and giving them a better future. And I mean it, okay? I'm not just reading this thing. Anyways, and last thing, and this comes from my heart, okay? I have the tendency of looking at the value of things, just, let me repeat this. Last thing, I am taking from, I'm talking from my heart, I have the tendency of looking at the value of things. Money is good. It helps us build things, work on projects, helps to improve education, et cetera. All these things will pass with time. We know that, right? On the other hand, the value that comes from a teacher, it is a lifetime of rewards. And again, I wanted to thank all you teachers for what you do. So what we're gonna do now is we're gonna pass the certificates. We'll call your name, and you just can come up front. This time, I'm not gonna read it, I have a guy here that can speak English. And he's gonna do a better job than I did last time, okay?
Let me interrupt for just a minute. Do you want everyone in one picture, or can you grab them as they come up? Okay, so all of the recipients, you may have a picture taken as you come up, but will you all come up at the end, and we'll get a group photo with the two of you. Okay?
All right, so I'll just pass the certificate to you, and you read them, okay?
I guess I better introduce myself. Quinn Bayme is my name. I reside in Hiram, and my children attend Lincoln Elementary School, so I actually attended Lincoln many years ago. I've been at New Core for about three years now, I'm in the shipping department, and it's a pleasure to be here with you. I've read through some of these certificates, and I think some of my children's teachers are here, so this is incredible. So thank you for allowing us to be here with you tonight. Rebecca Nguyen. Allison Tyson and Trisha Parker. Cynthia DeVall. Katie McBride. Logan Smith. Marcy Bowen. Rachelle Kendrick. Tammy Decursey. Did I say that right?
All right, so Theresa Stanton. Did I say that okay? All right, and Dolores Cortez. How's that? Good, huh?
Joyce Cooley. Kalen Murray. Jody Mangum. Peggy Joe Porter. Wendy Western. Alice Carlyle. Angie Robbins. Aubrey Van Lewin. Debbie Davis. I'm gonna try it hard on this one. Jan Theo Bald. Kimberly Jensen. Come on over. Sharon Grimes. Grimness. I knew I was gonna miss one. Camilla Frenzel. Emily Hill. Jessica Madsen. Kelly Babbitt.
Picture?
Did you want a picture? Mandy Green. Mika Bateson. Pandy Backus. Did I say that right? Did I say that right? Shaylin Hanson. Shalyn. Shauna Griffiths. Debbie Alexander. Did I say that completely wrong?
That was perfect!
Wow, he scared me when he stood up. Jared Anderson. Jared, it's nice to meet you.
We need a picture. We need a picture.
Is it Friday yet? Stacy Hoffmeister. From Mountain Crest. Stacy Hoffmeister. Jessica Sadler. From Mountainside. Jessica Sadler. Larissa Swassy. Swaysey? Larissa Swassy? Swaysey?
You guys will show up next year. I'm keeping the money.
Kathy Downs. Tiffany Kinder and Kelsey Clark. Katie Stokes. Kate Flukiger. Ryan Reynolds and Theo Anderson. Tayo Anderson. Cheryl Orm. Cindy Larson, Paige Holly, and Christina Brown.
Here, let me try this one here. Kami Andriyao. Is it? How do you know that is good?
Marty Reader. Marty Reader of Skyview. Lance Hanson and Monty McKinnon. Alicia Miller. Lori Marchant. And Teresa Reinhold.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's give them a round of applause. First of all, we would like to thank Nucor for those generous donations. We appreciate it so very much. It helps our school district so much. And thanks to all of the teachers who took the extra time to put together a grant, because it is extra work on top of all of the many things that you do. And I just want to say to you two, if your day job doesn't work out, I think you could do a juggling act. You'd be great. Could we get all of the teachers come up for one picture and we'll put the tall ones in the back and the shorter ones in the front? And squish together with our two Nucor representatives? Do they need to scrunch?
Okay, before any of you leave, just stay right where you're at for a minute. Because I don't want this story to ever be forgotten. I'm gonna tell it every time. When Nucor was going through the recession, they continued to give to this district and to the other districts, even when they couldn't keep their own employees working full-time. That's a commitment to education that I don't want ever to be forgotten by the teachers of this district and by everybody. They are just a good corporate friend. Thank you very much.
Oh, thanks so much. We appreciate you guys.
Thank you very much.
And your corporation. Yes. Okay, we're gonna move right along and we are to our public input section. And tonight, we do have one person who would like some public input. This is Mr. Jeff Westover. He is a parent from Green Canyon Transfers. Oh, that's his issue. Sorry. Green Canyon Transfers. And is he here? There you are. Okay, I just want to let you know you have three minutes to present whatever you would like to say. And the three minutes are gonna be counted down up here, so you'll know exactly.
It's been such a nice meeting. I hate to introduce a difficult topic and ask for some help.
Okay, go ahead.
My name is Jeff Westover. I am the parent of two Cache County students, two Cache County graduates, and three adult children who wish they had gone to Cache County schools. And let me just preface my remarks by thanking you for your good work. It's pretty evident and this kind of thing. This has gotta be your favorite meeting every year.
It is.
I'd like to tell you about two students in your schools right now, our schools right now. Their stories are very similar, but their story is not the same. Both of them live in Smithfield. Both of them attend Skyview High School. Both of them are juniors this year and will be seniors next year. Both of them are involved in the Coral Program at Skyview. Fantastic program, very well-led. And both of them auditioned and made the select group of, yet unnamed group, at Green Canyon for next year. Some 20 singers and dancers. And they both made it. However, one of them was approved for a transfer to Green Canyon. And then the other one wasn't. The other one is my daughter. I'm her father and her champion. What I'm asking the board to do is to investigate the administrative process that went into the selection criteria for those who could or would transfer. And tell me what went wrong and how two students who are similar can't be the same.
Okay.
Thank you.
I would like to thank you for coming. We appreciate the input that you have given and our district will look into that. And we'll get back to him. Is that correct? So, thank you.
Okay. Dr. Norton, did you get my email? Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Westover. All right. Okay, let's move on to the Consent Agenda. And hopefully everyone has had a chance to read everything in the Consent Agenda. And I would now like to take a motion to pass or accept the Consent Agenda.
I make the motion that we accept the Consent Agenda.
I second it.
All in favor... Do you want us to vote on this? Okay, we're gonna do this technologically. He brings it up. Alan and Roger. And you might have to explain to us again how we do this. Okay. Not yet. It is? Oh. Everybody have it? Okay, go ahead and vote. Okay, thank you. All right, let's move on down then to a request for approval of the Ridgeline High School Student Clubs. And that would be by President Hanky.
So, we had asked for your approval.
Okay. I will take a motion to accept, to approve the Ridgeline High School Student Clubs.
Please.
I need a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the new two clubs at Ridgeline.
I second.
Any discussion on this? Okay, all in favor, we will do it again electronically. Okay, we have accepted that.
For you to leave.
I'm not leaving. I'm still on the agenda later. Apparently right at the end.
It's amazing what you've done your first year of opening that school. I don't... It's gotta be unprecedented to win two state championships the first year a school exists. But the academics and everything has just absolutely just been flawless as you've opened that school. And I just want the board to recognize that and let you know how much we appreciate what you've done there. And the other people and the whole staff needs to be congratulated on just opening that school in a wonderful fashion, so thank you.
Thank you. It is a great staff. They've done a great job all the way. We recognized Annie today and whether it's the cooks or the custodians, secretaries, everybody. It's a great staff, so... And we're still hoping for one more state championship. Softball's like in the semifinals, so...
Okay.
Anyway.
Why don't you stay there and can... Is it okay just to skip down to number seven for him or do we have to do it in order?
Sure.
Okay. All right, so we would like to... Let me see what that is. Oh, okay. The reallocation of Ridgeline High School School Land Trust Funds.
Correct, so that we could use... I think we requested $7,000 to be moved for summer school.
Okay, I'll take a motion from the board to approve that.
I make the motion we approve the reallocation of the $7,000.
I second.
Okay, and we'll vote?
It's so suspenseful.
For us, too. Oh, is there any discussion on that? Okay. Go ahead and vote. And Bob, it really has been fun to see what's going on at your school this year.
Thank you.
All that you've done. Okay, great.
Thank you, and thanks for moving that up. I appreciate it.
Okay. The next one on the agenda is a request for approval of the medication policy. And Karen?
So, being a newbie, I'm not sure how I'm supposed to do this, but I request the approval of the medication policy as presented on April 13th.
That's just exactly right.
Look at me!
So, I will take a motion to approve the medication policy.
I move that we approve the medication policy as presented.
I second it.
Any discussion?
Yes, I sent some notes to Karen
Right.
in an email about questions that I had, and Larry got a copy, about questions that I had about this policy. In Section B, it talks about... It references administering medication to different students and the requirements for that and that type of thing. But in... And Karen's... And my concern was that it doesn't talk about... It talks about regulation, but it doesn't talk about high school students who self-medicate themselves all the time at school. And so Karen's answer to me was that this section deals with when the medication is administered by a school employee, right?
Yes.
So, do we need to note that somewhere at the beginning of that section?
I thought it did. I'll have to review it and make sure. Are you talking about Section B or Section D?
Section B.
Section B.
Yeah, the one that talks about...
Because that one talks about staff-administered only.
And so, because Section F addresses the student self-medication.
Self-administration, yeah.
So, the only concern that I have, board, in this policy is that in Section F, it talks about limiting the students to carrying only one-day supply of medication. But I don't know any students who really do that, so how do we regulate that? All the ones that I've personally seen carry, you know, a bottle of ibuprofen or a bottle of Tylenol or have it in their lockers or whatever, and they share it all the time.
Exactly, and that's the whole idea of just saying that it's one day's dose. We recognize we're not gonna be able to monitor it. When I started 26 years ago, this is basically what was always said if students were self-administering a one-day's dose. We did check several other districts' policies and they all... Not all of them, but a lot of them say the same thing. But there is no way to monitor it or regulate it. I think as we have always taught, our staff that are administering medication are monitoring things, that if they notice someone who's administering something that we don't have the appropriate paperwork for, or if they saw that someone had a bottle of Tylenol or whatever, that we would just let them know, "Need to bring a day's dose." And that is because we're worried they're gonna be passing it out to their friends or they're gonna drop them in the hallway or whatever. So, that's the reasoning behind that.
Okay. I understand the reasoning behind it, but it's like, I don't know, it's like the text...
will be also those few who do not, and you just have to try and catch those few who do not.
Doesn't it help protect us to at least have that policy?
To at least have it. That's what I would say, is that we're using appropriate nursing protocol and that kind of thing, health protocol, that that's the most prudent thing to do.
Okay, that makes sense.
It's like the seatbelt, too, you know?
We could probably throw out half of our policies if you use that as a rule to whether we could have them or not.
Okay, are you okay? Terry?
I am. In your email to me, Karen, you didn't give me an answer about D.
I must have deleted that part of it, because it was, I looked at that today. Section D is specific to the seizure rescue medications.
Right.
And so that's why that, that point five is the specific section for seizure rescue medications.
Except that Utah Code, that section three of the Utah Code, almost all is about the, specifically about the seizure medication, because it was changed to, it was changed last year? Was it twenty sixteen or twenty fifteen that the seizure rescue?
Twenty fifteen. No, last year, twenty sixteen, sorry.
Yeah. So it just seemed to me that, that point five didn't include everything that was listed in our section D. So I just wondered if we wanted to make that a broader, a more broad reference to the Utah-
We can. If we leave off the point five and it's just talking about six oh three, then that's specifically related to glucagon.
Is that not the, not the rescue medication?
It is a rescue medication, but it's for diabetes and not seizures.
Okay. That's why I asked you that question.
Yeah.
Because I don't know about that stuff, so, okay.
So the point five is just the seizure rescue medication.
Okay.
And we do talk about the diabetes medication, the glucagon, in a different section.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, everything good? All right, Terry, appreciate your scrutiny of all of these and making sure that we have them correct when we get them passed. Anybody else have any discussion or questions?
But I'd just like to thank you for the work that you've done in updating this, Karen, and bringing it, bringing it so that it's up to date, proper procedure. That's why we look to you, is because we certainly don't know.
Yes, and thanks for answering all my questions.
Well, thank you, and it was- It was a department contribution, so.
Okay, we'll go ahead and vote then. I think you have to go back to your-
The class this one?
Yeah. Look at me, giving technical advice. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next one is a request for approval of the wellness policy, and that will be presented by Tara.
Hello.
Hi.
And same thing, I'm here to request the approval of the wellness policy as requested on April thirteenth.
Okay, I will take a motion to approve the wellness policy.
I'll make that motion that we approve the wellness policy.
I second it.
Any discussion on this?
I just want to know if we approve this if we all get prizes from the last contest.
I'll see what I can do. Okay, let's go ahead and vote.
Boy, you got off easy.
Okay, thank you, Tara. And now the request for the approval to retire the policies, Larry?
Yes, and Karen had a hand in helping me prepare this, the policies that we're looking to retire. Both of them, again, deal with the law that is now illegal of notifying others of those who have communicable diseases. And Karen checked with the state, and they advised that the best would be to retire the policies and cover some of those areas in new policies that they'll bring forth.
Okay, be sure and talk into the mic.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, all right, I will take a motion then to approve, approve to retire the policies, the communicable disease policy and the student health program policy.
I move that we retire those two poli, the, excuse me, I should say it specifically. I move that we retire the communicable disease policy and the student health policy that are antiquated.
I second.
Any discussion? Okay, go ahead and vote. Okay. Next is the request for the approval of the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen School Land Trust Plans, and that will be by Mike. Mike, is number five and number eight on this the same thing, or are there two School Land Trust things?
There isn't an eight on the-
Oh, I have an eight.
It was duplicated, like I had Cheryl remove it.
Oh, okay, okay, I just have my older one up then. Okay.
Well, I think the school board members, you did your homework, or you did what you were supposed to do, because we've had lots of calls from principals wanting to open their plans, to make a few suggestions and edit a few things, and also it's good that Anne's here, because Anne's the one who really works and directs that and helps those principals do that. I did learn today, though, how to unlock a plan, because Anne was not here, so I, I know how to do that. But anyway, I want to thank the board for your efforts and what you did to, you know, go through that process to try to understand the plan. I think you, I hope you gained something out of that as you read it and went over that, and I think, and principals, when they've called me, they, they said, they really are looking at these, aren't they? I said, yeah, they really are. But you know, when we receive that much money, I think we need to be accountable for how those funds are being spent, so. At this time, I'm asking for the board to approve the seventeen, eighteen Trust, School Land Trust Plans, and then with your approval, we would then submit them to the state tomorrow for, then they go through an approval process, and we'll get more comments back, and then we'll have the, you'll be able to see those, and then the schools will correct plans again.
Can I say something first?
Sure.
Kathy, Mike, I appreciate all the work that you put into teaching us-
Yes.
-about this. That was very invaluable as we, at least for me, as I was going through everything, so thank you very much.
And that's what I was going to say, too, thanks to Larry for setting that up for us, because we all really didn't know what we were doing, and for the training that you gave, and the handout that you gave us-
Right.
-was so helpful. And I, I, does the board all like the second handout that he sent us as far as looking over the plans?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that one's probably the one we want to use next year, if we both remember on it, but that was a big help.
But before we do, Anne, thank you for being willing to unlock those and help those principals. I know when I talked to them, they were a little bit concerned that they wouldn't be able to get into that, so, big thank you.
Yes, to both of you.
And I appreciate the principals responding. Three out of the four that I emailed, they responded back very quickly.
And all positive. They were very positive about it.
Do you think, do you feel like that's a, a good process to follow?
Well, it is. It, I think it is a good process. Now, we, we will still, like, we still have to look at them and review them ourselves from, from our eyes, but the requirement is the board-
Right.
-approves those plans, and, and we're, hopefully, we're just a set of eyes to help you guys as well on it.
For myself, it was a much better read if I knew that I was evaluating the plan, rather than just reading and okaying it. So I appreciated that process, even though when I got your email, I was like, oh, they're going to know that I'm editing it? So it's a good thing that I, I think I still have good relationships with all those principals.
Well, that, that doesn't, that didn't hurt any relationship. It ju, it just lets the principals know that the board's involved, and with these, these public funds, I mean, it's, it's critical.
And that tally sheet, Mac, was involved, I mean, it was just, we couldn't have done it without that.
When we do the training next year that we always do in the fall, maybe we'll make that part of the training where we give it to the principals so they can see that and say, you know what, this is what the board members are looking at.
I think that would help them and a sample-
Yeah, that would help a lot if they had a copy of that, yeah.
And a sample of a plan that's done it right, so they can see how it was done, because that helped, too.
And make it one of my school's plans to use at their mind.
Oh, yeah, thanks for taking care of North Hasburg, yeah.
See, I didn't, I don't know who you guys assign to what schools, you know, I, you know, we just started getting emails.
Okay. I will take a motion to approve the two thousand seventeen, eighteen School Land Trust Plans.
I make the motion that we approve the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen School Land Trust Plans.
I second it.
Any more discussion? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. Okay, and then, Mike, also the approval of the district's comprehensive guidance plan.
Last board meeting, we presented that, and a couple of schools presented their data projects along with that, and everything's in place. I believe all of our counselors are placed at this time. We do have one secondary opening that's posted, one elementary counseling position that's open right now that they're working through to place, and our reviews are all scheduled for next year, so at this time, we're asking for the board's approval to the continued support of that plan in the district.
Okay.
I'll make that motion that we accept the approval of the comprehensive guidance program for the Cache District.
Second.
Oh, my mind just went blank. Discussion?
I have a question for Craig, since he's here. Is, how, when I saw the, I don't remember if it was that I saw an email from you that we were getting an elementary counselor for the district, or if it was a job posting, but anyway, when I saw that, I was excited, but I wondered, how are we paying for that? Okay, thank you.
And I appreciate that. That's one of my soapbox issues, is having counselors in the elementary schools, so I appreciate that. Okay, let's go ahead and vote. Okay, the monthly financial report. Can you do that in two minutes?
We're all counting on you, Dale.
Look at him lean. He's running groves.
Thank you for all you do in the district, we appreciate it.
Just quickly then, it's for a report, the end of April. Basically, there's, there's very little change in here from our, our previous reports. Budget's continuing to operate well. The one, real change you'll notice in here would be back on the, the last of the general fund expenditure section, well, let's see, you may actually want to see it in here in detail on this report, doesn't go to that fine of detail, but, you know, we were sitting with about a three and a half million dollar carryover. Previously, and so I know, we've been looking at our, our construction projects, we have expended all of the, the bond funds themselves as far as allocating them towards projects, plus we've had to, to use our, our capitalization funds both from last year and this year, and we use also part of next year's, but we were looking at, at actually using eight hundred thousand dollars of the, the unappropriated funds in the general fund to, to help with those capital projects, just so that they actually have additional funds to do other things that they need besides, like, these projects, which, which they do. And the other thing that we were recommending was, would be the, the increase of the undistributed reserve, which has been at, at two million dollars, that we're proposing we increase that to two and a half million dollars, so it'd be an increase of another five hundred thousand. So it'll still leave just over a, a two million dollar carryover available, funds that we have now. And so I, I still think it still leaves us in a very strong position, but, so if you look at the report, that will be shown in the, in the working budget section, and so in June, we'll actually bring a, a final legal budget for your approval, and we'll review again that quickly, but that would be part of, what we would recommend is the final, part of the final budget.
All right, thank you. I think you've done an awesome job in our district, making sure this capital money has worked out okay.
Well, it's, it's been a long process, but it's, it certainly has been a great help to have the state recognize that, that they needed to get back on the equalization bandwagon. And I missed a meeting the other morning, and Lyle Heryard was there, and it's the K-16 Alliance Meeting, and, and he ran into Mike later on, he said, you probably should have been at the meeting. One of the comments was made, when are we, by a neighboring school district, that when are we going to start getting the kind of money that Cache is getting? And Lyle's comment was, you need to understand that we're just raising them up to your level, which was a great comment for Lyle to make. That's, that's the truth of it. The districts have had a lot more money than we have, and that report, that short snapshot that Dale just gave you, that is so different than the, the other seventeen years or so that I've been here, where we've just, just been scraping by with everything we could put together just to keep the district running. We're now at the point where we can start making some decisions that, like Craig said, will get us back to where we were before the recession. We also got out of media, special media, teachers, certified media people in our elementary schools, that was a cut we made. There's still lots of cuts that we made before, when we went through the recession, so we're just trying to gradually get back to where we were, and elementary counseling is one of those areas that I really felt bad that we'd cut. And so it's, it's just nice to be able to build our reserves up, that's one of the things that we got kind of downgraded a little bit when we went to the bond agencies, they thought we ought to have a bigger fund balance at the end of the year, and, and also the overall thing, so we're trying to build that up a little. We still want to maintain enough that maybe we can give a little Christmas bonus when it gets time there, too. But our neighbors, you know, they're, they're, they're definitely in a situation that's a lot different, and I feel, I really feel kind of bad for their superintendent in, in relationship, they're losing enrollment, and that's tough. That's a tough road to hoe for anybody in any district, and so, but it's nice to be on the other side for a little bit in my career. First time ever that I, that I really could go to bed at night and say, you know, we could really maybe do some of those things that I've been- will get us back to where we were before the recession. We also got out of media, special media, teachers, certified media people in our elementary schools. That was a cut we made. There's still lots of cuts that we made before, when we went through the recession. So we're just trying to gradually get back to where we were. And elementary counseling is one of those areas that I really felt bad that we'd cut. And so it's just nice to be able to build our reserves up. That's one of the things that we got kind of downgraded a little bit when we went to the bond agencies. They thought we ought to have a bigger fund balance at the end of the year and also the overall thing. So we're trying to build that up a little. We still want to maintain enough that maybe we can give a little Christmas bonus when it gets time there too. But our neighbors, you know, they're, they're definitely in a situation that's a lot different. And I feel, I really feel kind of bad for their superintendent in relationship to, they're losing enrollment. And that's tough, that's a tough road to hoe for anybody in any district. And so, but it's nice to be on the other side for a little bit in my career. First time ever that I, that I really could go to bed at night and say, you know, "We could really maybe do some of those things that I've been exposed to over my career" that I just usually would say, "Well, that's a nice thing to do, but at five dollars a person, a student, I'd just say, 'We don't have that kind of money to do those kind of things.'" And so we're, we're in good shape financially and we'll be, we'll be careful. We've got a school opening in Providence and we don't know exactly how that's going to affect us. But we know that we're growing fast enough that it's, that it probably will not be something that we'll regret ever having come into the Valley, another charter school. It will just be that they saved us probably from building another elementary school, so.
With the exception is that they'll post some students at first, but they'll come, they'll end up coming back.
They will, yeah, they'll, they'll be back. So Dale's done a nice job of budgeting, negotiations have gone well. We aren't going to be the best in the state, but we're certainly not going to be the worst in the state at what we're offering. So I think it's going to be good, so.
Well, thank you for the great management of our money and also for the advocacy for the capital equalization.
Yeah, we'll continue, we'll continue to do that. Things, things can only look better. Probably the best thing that ever happened was, was Jordan School District becoming a poor cousin. And as soon as they became the poor cousin, whatever they did to help them just helped us. And they can't help them without helping us. So they're the richest of the poor guys that we run around with, but they still looked at us poor in the Wausatch front, so that's helped us.
And thank you for two minutes.
And I, that's my superintendent's report too. Except remember, the end of this month is really a busy time, so I'm hoping you've got the end of the, like, the thirty-first, first and second graduations, one on the thirty-first, three on the.
Two, two on the thirty-first.
One.
Isn't Skyview at three?
No, they got, they got changed.
Oh, okay, so tell me the, what happened there.
Good thing we talked, yeah, there's only one on. Mountain Crest is the thirty-first. Cash High is at one o'clock on the first.
We'll just live at USU on the first.
That's right.
Okay, so Mountain Crest is one.
And Ridgeline at seven on the first.
Is it on our, is it updated on our library thing?
Yes.
Yeah, I think it is.
And Steve, when is the date for the celebration?
Second, end of year party, three P.M. Now, you don't need to be there at three. Setup and all that will be taking place.
I'll tell you, the schools get out, don't they get out about three?
School gets out about between one and two, I think.
The elementary.
The cookout, June second.
Well, we're doing a little bit early, oh, bad day, yeah.
Okay, some of this.
Cookout's the next day, starting, I think, from four o'clock on.
The second, June second.
Swimming, you can man a grill if you want to come down, get grease on you, and Lyle and all that.
Just come and hang out and greet people?
Yep, yep.
And that's so fun.
And thanks for coming to the dinner last night. Just a quick update, if you're wondering why we didn't do something with Craig. I only want to have one funeral for Craig and I'm feeling bad enough that he's going to leave. Nobody's had more impact on this district for academic achievement in the last ten years than Craig. But he's going to go till September and he's going, we're going to have a end of year. I think he's going to do something on, the district office is going to do something on the thirty-first for him. But he also really is not retiring from our district, he's just quitting, leaving our district. So that dinner last night was a, was a retirement dinner. And every year, we get asked the question, "Who gets to come to the retirement dinner?" So you wouldn't have known last night, but, but we had some other people who were there. And I welcome anybody to come and eat with us, but we're only going to recognize those who actually retire from our district, that's what that meal, that's what that band is all about. But we will, we will have a nice going away on the thirty-first, but Craig's going to be with us till September. And then he's probably going to help us in particular areas for a year or two, like Maureen has and like Pat. No, Pat didn't, but Holly did. And if we can continue to pull things out of those individuals who've given their whole life to education to help us out, I think that's the best money we can just spend, just fifteen thousand dollars to keep them in the system and, and give them a particular part. And we don't know for sure what he'll be helping, but we've got some ideas, so.
Hey, on your, on the agenda here, you were also going to tell us about the district art.
Okay, and I've got that down. I, I'm just going to come and we'll just put it on as a regular agenda item because I know there are some of you who've expressed an interest of, you know, what is it? How much do we have in art and, and would we ever want to sell it? Now, that issue's come up several times during the time that I've been there, especially during the recession. And we talked about it, we can talk about it again. Prior boards have elected not to do anything with that art except keep it. This board is not bound by what prior boards have done, so we can have that discussion. And I'll bring you all a booklet, tells you how valuable it is, you'll be surprised what's hanging behind you. And I guess at some point, maybe we, we ought to be worried about security, but it's kind of hard for a guy to pull up and pick up and put a piece of art that big in the back. And so, so far, we've lucked out.
Okay, are there any board committee reports that are listed?
We also have the awards assemblies.
Oh, okay, that's on my, on the board president, so let me just go over a couple of things here. Okay, so I've got the awards night assemblies on May twenty-fourth. And Skyview is at seven P.M. and then Ridgeline and Mountain Crest are at one P.M., correct? Okay, so.
All on the same day?
All on the same day.
And Cash High is doing theirs on their graduation day.
Oh, okay, I haven't heard anything about that. So that's the day that we have a ton, right?
Yeah, she's just doing, the reason I know is because Bridgeline gives some scholarships also and she's just going to do it along with the graduation.
They just announced that graduation time.
Okay, oh, okay, all right, so we've got myself and Terry for Skyview, but then these other two are at one and we've got people assigned who work. So are Jeff and Randall, are you able to go to any of them?
I'll be able to.
What one can you go to?
I'll go to Ridgeline.
Okay, so Ridgeline will be Jeff and Randall cannot. Okay, and then Mountain Crest is Larry and Roger, then we're all represented, okay. Then I did have the June second cookout for those who can come. Retreat, mentioning that again, that will be our next time that we get together and it does start at five is what we said instead of five thirty, you'll make a note of that.
I got to let Richard know.
Let Richard know, and I need a lunch count. Larry let me know and Terry let me know.
I'll be there.
And I can't remember, okay.
Yeah, I'll be there.
Okay, Dale for the retreat?
I'll be there.
Everybody?
I'll be there.
Okay, so I'll let Carolyn know on that. Oh, and Richard.
What do we do at the awards assembly, smile and look pretty?
Sit on the stage and sweat.
It's hot, so I'd suggest not a suit coat.
Okay. Tank top and shorts. I actually have to present for Bridgeline at Mountain Crest.
I want to tell you about one little thing and it's just going to take me four minutes. For some reason, I think it's just because I'm president of the board, I was invited to the family place with Dr. Redd and Esther Lee Mullenau and Vana or Vonda, somebody who's in sociology or social work at USU. And they did a presentation on adverse childhood experiences among Cache County and Utah's children. And they're calling them ACES, that's the acronym for it. And Dr. Redd is kind of the one who is spearheading this and I'm not sure where he heard about it to get going, but he's gathered a whole lot of information on what happens to kids who are involved in adverse childhood experiences. And adverse childhood experiences could be like a parent is serving jail. They're treated unfairly because of their race or their ethnicity. They are a victim or a witness of neighborhood violence, domestic violence, family disorder, divorce, death of a parent, living with someone who has alcohol or drug problem. And I really started to listen when he began to give the statistics about what happens to these kids if they have like four or more of these adverse situations. Like fifty point seven percent of them will attempt suicide. And sixteen point one percent will become alcoholics, ten point three percent will become drug addicts. They will be involved in teen pregnancy, promiscuity and perpetuate domestic violence. And the list just goes on and on and on and on. So here's where I thought it kind of affected us. He said that a lot of these kids have a high rate of absenteeism. And when they come to school, they, their mind is so full of what has happened to them at home. They're not concentrating, they can't focus, they aren't doing their work. And so their teachers kind of label them as lazy, having ADD, ADHD, bipolar. They put them on medication and, and then it just doesn't work. And so what the sociologist said was that what did work, if they have one caring adult in their life who will listen and talk to them, so they have a place to free their emotions, that it just really helps tons. So they're trying to get this word out to everybody. And Jane Ann Chandler and Jen, the counselor from Skyview, were there and I talked with them a little bit afterwards. And they were kind of interested in maybe having this for counselors, this presentation for counselors. But I wondered, is this something we would like teachers to also have? It took about two hours for the presentation with these three people. And so I'm just passing it on to you and for us to think about. They want more people to come to their next meeting, which is August ninth, because they feel like the more people who get together, the more the word gets out and the more we can brainstorm how we might be able to help these children. So my question is, is anybody interested in kind of becoming more acquainted with this and going to a meeting? And are we interested in trying to see something implemented in our district?
I would think so. I would think our counselors would be our first line of people, like train the trainers, get them. And then two hours for every teacher is not that easy to do. So let's see if, if we can get our counselors and then they can do it on an individual basis at each school. Much easier than we can bring the whole district together for a two hour.
Okay, I, I asked Dr. Redd if he was available to do a presentation, which his part was probably about twenty minutes, at the retreat. Interested or not interested in that for us? Would you think that would be a good subject to cover?
Yeah, it would be. But Steve, part of the, part of the issue here is that these kids, a lot of these kids are elementary.
Well, they start out elementary, but if it's not.
But if it's not caught, then, then it moves on. But especially if we could get our elementary counselors to talk to the elementary schools. In an, in an opening meeting, not two, two hours, but to tell what they've been trained on and how important it is for teachers to take a few minutes and listen to those kids.
And they actually said that even if they're in a family with a very dysfunctional family, but one of the parents is that caring individual, it kind of takes care of the problem. And just from personal, personal experience, I'll tell you, I'm one of those children who grew up with an alcoholic father and a mom who totally handled the situation brilliantly with me. So I guess that's why I'm kind of interested.
And Kathy with every other kid in the neighborhood too.
Yeah, my mom, yes. So if you are interested in learning more about it, let me know.
Get the information to Mike so he can get it to the counselors.
Okay, all right. Anything else that we need to talk about? All right, I will take a motion then for this meeting to be adjourned.
I make a motion, we adjourn the meeting?
I second.
All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Okay, are we okay with that?
It's unanimous.
Thank you so much, everyone, this was a long meeting.